Welcome to 101. I'm Greg Bassett, your host from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. It's a big day here at PAC 14. We have a member of the Salisbury City Council in our midst, the Vice President of that Board, Muir Boda. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Greg. Good to see you.
So your good friend, you haven't been on in a while. How's Muir Boda doing?
Doing great. You know, I got smell, I got taste. So I've been fortunate to avoid that, that mess.
People tell me all the time, I smell and I have no taste, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, so that happens. But no, doing great. A lot, lot of good things going, still going to school full-time, so I've got one more year to go.
Excellent.
So still working, so glad I still got that job and then City Council. So everything's going great everywhere.
Well, you're the classic person who has a real job and then serves on the City Council in your other time. You know, you balance both, real community service type stuff. And there's a lot going on in the council. It seems like there's not a lot, because there hasn't been a lot of drama. But tell me about this little homes thing that's going on.
So Here is Home is something that.
It's called, it's called Here is Home.
Here is Home. And it was a broad spectrum package of various pieces of legislation, trying to tackle one of our biggest issues in our community, which is just housing availability. You know, we've got a great economy. People want to live here. It's the Eastern Shore. People want a place to live. And, and you know, and the housing crisis is nationwide. I mean, it, you know, it's even worse out west, areas like San Francisco and different places. So we're trying to find something that works here specific for Salisbury. And I, and I think with this, we've, we've found it where, you know, we're, we're looking for single-family housing. We're looking for, you know, people who want condos, townhomes, people who prefer apartments, and then affordable housing. So, so it's been a, a multi-branch effect that, that we think we've found the right formula for Salisbury.
Right. And people think this is about homelessness, but it's not. It's more about affordable housing and availability and just how things have changed in terms of housing desires.
It's not everybody wants a, a two-story house with a big yard to take care of. Some people don't want that. And so there's various housing solutions that need to be available for people who want to live life their way. So, so that's what this attacks. One of the things we see in the results from this, especially on the developer side, is nearly 2,000 units in the pipeline. And that's a mixture of townhomes, apartments, single-family homes. So, which you're talking over around $200 million in construction that's getting ready to happen in the next few years. So one of the things that's going to help is it's, it's going to increase that supply.
Right.
So basic economics, if your, if your supply is down and you don't have much available, prices go up.
Right.
Which is one of the things we've seen over the past 20 years. We've never figured that out. But now we think adding more housing units is going to help level off that, that pricing and, and help bring it down, which kind of helps affects the, the affordable housing piece. So, you know, affordable housing is tough because you, a lot of that, you know, depends on government, you know, federal and state assistance. And some of that's not there right now. But one of the things we saw is, is working with Habitat for Humanity and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing and finding ways that we can help them, which is while a house is in construction, we can, you know, they won't have to pay property taxes on that and some other fees and stuff that we've looked at waiving for when they're trying to, you know, bring people who want to own a home into that. So, so that's one piece of it. And then the other piece is, is the tiny homes village for the homeless. So we think this is something similar has been done in different areas with a lot of great success. And so we think that the investment in that is going to help that population for those who want to help. And then with it, we can bring in the wraparound services that a lot of them needs, whether it's mental health, whether it's medical, whether it's veteran services. We, we can, we can really wrap that around and, and help those people get back on their feet to the next level. So that's something we think we've come at it, attacking the, the biggest needs in our community. And it's something we're all very proud of.
Right. I'm fascinated by this because for so long as a reporter, I covered the idea that development pays for development. It was a cost of entry. If you wanted to be in the city, you had to pay huge upfront expenses with water and sewer, the taxes. But now the, the philosophy has changed because there's a need for housing and, and we offer, the city offers the right place for that.
Yeah. And, and ultimately, what's going to happen is, is it's going to expand the tax base. So, you know, these properties are not currently paying the maximum amount of property taxes that they, that they could do.
Right.
So when you go and you develop it, and that property value goes up, well, then that's, you know, we, we look at it as a long-term investment. We can forego a little bit of money on the front side. And then, but we're looking for a long-term investment. We're, we're going to see that, you know, past my lifetime.
Right.
So that is, that's the goal there is, is to expand the tax base.
Yeah. So many people I encounter, they're, they're not poor enough to qualify for the low-income housing options. But they don't have enough money to participate, you know, in, in that sector either. So they're stuck and they end up living out in the middle of the county somewhere. They can't really afford to live near the urban core.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, we're hoping that, you know, some of that will afford some of the people to be able to move into the urban core if they wish. But you also got, this is one of the destinations on the East Coast that people want to move to, one of the top destinations. And so, you know, we've got to accommodate that. We've, we're competing with Sussex County. You know, we recognize that. And so we're, we're trying to stay competitive and, and bring that, you know, the, the quality of, of workforce here.
Every year, the, the county does one, or the state does one-third of the county in terms of assessments. The Salisbury Fruitland was in this most recent assessment. The average increase in a home was 18.5%. We, we wrote a story about that. But then the, the city put out a press release yesterday saying, well, yeah, well, it was 18.5%, but in Salisbury, it was 25%. Salisbury truly drove that increase.
The assessment comes from the state. We have no influence over, over the assessment. And they, and they do it now. It, it goes through, it balances out over the three-year period.
Right.
Remember one year with my mom, one year her taxes went up a little bit. And then like another year later, they went down because of the assessed value of the county.
Right.
So ultimately, what it does is you, you might see an increase in your city property taxes of what you pay in based on the value of your home. But in the long run, with the revenue cap in Wycomico County, and especially over the course of the next five to 10 years, we're going to see people paying lower county property taxes because of all of the construction.
Right.
And we've been seeing it. It's going to, so your county property taxes are going to go down because they can't go over that 2% revenue increase.
Right.
So, so in the long run, everybody's going to benefit. People in Sharp Town, people in Willards, you know, people in, in Eden, they're going to benefit from the growth in Salisbury because it's going to lower their county property taxes.
But you want your house to be worth more? Because I know an assessment's not the same as appraisal, but you'll be able to sell it for more and make more when the time comes.
And typically, your appraisal is going to be a higher percentage. You know, when we bought our house in 2006, you know, we paid 130,000 for it. And then, you know, and then right after that was when everything went down. Well, the value and everything just dropped. And so our mortgage was technically underwater.
Right.
But now we're like, it's like doubled from what it was about 10 years ago.
Now you have a great deal going on.
Yeah, now we got a great deal going on. And it's like, oh, I got all kinds of equity in my house. You know, so it's, but that's the real estate market. Everything fluctuates depending on what's going on. You know, and, and our goal is, is to, is to create the environment for growth, not just in housing, but in business and, and the economy. And, you know, we want to see Salisbury University grow. We want to see Warwick Community College grow. We want to see UMS grow. Because that's all, you know, it helps everybody when, when the economy as a whole is growing. We're hoping that, you know, we've, we can, and we've done a great job in a pandemic with economic growth in our city. Even with people struggling out of work, you know, our economy is still, is still strong. So that's something that I think the, our foundation of our community is strong, which is the core of our community is our people. So I think that says a lot about the Eastern Shore and Salisbury.
Now Salisbury, the government, City Council has districts. And you're in a district that's right in the center of the city. And it's probably the, the district that has the most potential of, for neighborhood problems. And you're a neighborhoods guy. How are things going in the neighborhoods?
You know, there, you know, I talk to people all over my district on a regular basis, a regular basis. And I work with people who I represent as well. And, you know, I, I think, you know, they're, you know, one of the big issues in the city is the dirt bikes.
Right.
Which seem to be a problem every summer. And, you know, the police is, you know, they, they're working, you know, they, they do their best. They usually by midsummer round up a lot of the bikes and stuff. But, and a lot of them, you know, because you're not supposed to ride those on the streets.
But they can't be caught. They're so fast, they're gone.
And, you know, we don't want to chase them because, and that just creates.
Someone's going to get killed and it's going to be the police fault.
Yeah. Which really, it's not the police fault because first off, you shouldn't be riding a dirt bike on the streets.
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's the, it, you know, they try to lay blame everywhere but where it belongs. So, you know, there's, there's a, there's a place for dirt bikes, but the streets of a city is not that. So there, there are some things that, that they, that they're trying to do as strategy, as trying to, you know, investigative piece of it. And they do a good job. It's just sometimes that stuff, it's not like TV where everything's wrapped up in an hour. You know?
Right.
Sometimes it takes a couple of months to put a good investigation together, especially when it's something comprehensive. So.
Right.
But, you know, I think that's one problem. You know, there's, you know, there are some housing issues through the city as far as, as quality of the housing stock. And so, you know, one of the other things we, we were discussing and trying to find a way, how do we encourage not just new housing and, and building new apartment buildings and all that? How do we encourage property owners to improve their properties, especially on, on the rental side? So that's something that I think, you know, over the course of the next year, we need to focus on, on improving the quality of the overall housing stock.
Right.
So a lot of that comes with zoning. Some of that comes with other things. And I, and I think that's, those are things we're discussing and working on. So we're hopefully have something, you know, targeting that issue as well.
And I really have to admire the work that Habitat for Humanity has done with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, how they've kind of united each other.
Yeah.
Working with the city, the city works with them. I, I think that shows great hope.
Yeah. And, and they, and they provide a great service because, you know, one piece of it is educational. It's teaching people how to be, you know, responsible homeowners, how to manage their money. And then, and then it's, it's teaching people how to take care of their house and rehab these houses. And then, you know, and you, and you, and that's just overall, it, it makes better value of, of your community as a whole and your neighborhood as a whole when they, when they do that. So they do a great job. We're proud to have them as partners. And they, and, you know, anything we can do to help, that's, that's what we've, we've been focused on.
There's been that constant dynamic between residents and the police, when the police arrive and the communication that goes on. I know the police are working very hard on that. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, you know, law enforcement and how policing is done is, is changing because the world's changing. And so one of the things that, you know, we got a grant earlier this year from Target through the US Marriage Association to help bring, our goal is to have it work a lot like SWIFT.
Right.
So, you know, you know, police deal with a variety of complicated calls. And Salisbury Police Department answers probably over 50,000 calls for service a year.
Right.
That's a lot of calls for service. So you figure they cover 28 square miles, which is huge, huge territory. When you think from Warwick, all the way over to Harbor Point.
Yeah.
Almost to the Delmar Line, down to the Fruitland Line.
Right.
And everything in between. So, you know, there's a variety of, of calls that we, that, that they deal with. And so we think that this, this new program will be able to give them some much-needed expert help on the mental health side. So they, they can have someone that responds with them. And then if we run the program like SWIFT where there's follow-up.
Right.
Shouldn't be a police officer following up for some of those calls. It, I think, can help people that really need to help and get them, you know, on the right path. And, and I think, you know, you know, the Chief Duncan is focused on training and, and education with the officers and, and problem solving, solving and dealing with difficult situations. And I think we've, I think they've, I believe that they've done a great job, especially in, in difficult issues with tension and difficult people in some of the communities. They've done a, a great job. And when there's a problem, you know, and this is just my experience of professionally working with them, my day job years ago, when there's a problem with an officer, they handle it.
Yeah.
And if there's an officer that's a problem, that officer usually does not, they're, does not make it.
Right.
So they're very good about handling a problem or an issue when it arises. And, and that's something that has been a part of the accreditation process with the Salisbury Police Department. They're very strict on reports, on, you know, how they submit reports, how they interact with people. And I think one of the things that has helped that both ways is officers having body cameras. I think that has, and since we've had those, we've not had one lawsuit.
Right.
That, that's gone anywhere.
Right. There's no he said, she said anymore.
Video does not lie.
Yeah.
And so when they, when you see the entirety of, of the situation, and not just something that's cut up and posted on, on social media, but you see the entire, from the office perspectives. And, and anytime they have issues and they bring those people in and then they see, oh, okay, maybe I shouldn't pursue this any further because I might've been part of the problem if I had too many drinks that night. I, I think that's been a, a positive influence on law enforcement behavior, but also the behavior of the individuals that they're interacting with.
Yeah. I remember before you were elected, you were just kind of a guy out there who had a lot of opinions about a lot of things. And you weren't shy about expressing them. And then you get elected and you become part of the problem.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're sitting there, you know, not in the driver's seat, but in the car with everyone else. And you've really matured through this, Muir. You really have. I mean, you've, you've developed some leadership.
I think, you know, when I first came on, the political culture in, in Salisbury was very contentious, very, very poisonous, very, you know, there was this side or this side.
And I actually thought you would add to that. I didn't think you would be able to make it soften it. I thought you would get in there and mix it up. But anyway, go ahead.
You know, but, you know, and sometimes I did. But I, you know, what was one of the issues that was holding Salisbury back on, on major investments, major achievements, is nobody was in the same boat, rowing in the same direction. Everybody wanted to do their own thing. They wanted their moment on TV. They wanted to go to the legislative session and hold a budget hearing. That's not how it works.
Right.
You know, there's work sessions. You attend the work sessions. You do the work.
And they're boring.
Yeah.
But they're important.
Yeah. And, you know, it was like, they weren't on, you know, they, they fought to have the work sessions on camera. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's great. I think as much transparency that you can have, and I think Salisbury, the Salisbury government is one of the most transparent governments in the area. And, and this is from being the president of the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities for a year. I mean, a lot of these towns are not as transparent as they should be. And, and there's problems with, with that. But, so I think, I think transparency, I think when you get a group of people together and you decide as adults, you know, we, we've got a short window of time. Because I don't know who's going to come after me. Jake doesn't know who's going to come after him. Jack doesn't know who's going to come after this group. And every other member of the council, Michelle and April and Angela, you know, we, we all have the same vision. And we bought into the same vision of, of making Salisbury the, the true economic center of the Eastern Shore that it is. And, and what we're doing is executing that plan. And we're all on the same page. This is probably the first time in the history of Salisbury, probably since the Great Fires in the 1800s, that everybody was on the same page and moving forward willingly. And I think that is what attracts people who look at Salisbury and say, that's a place I want to, I want to do business in. That's a place I want to be a part of. And so that's something we're very proud of. I mean, that was something early on, we said, you know, we've got to do this. And these are the things that we got to do. And I think that is, you know, it, when you're all in, in the boat together and you're rowing together and you're, everybody's in sync, these are the things that happen. And so that's something that I'm proud to be a part of that and to help create that, that atmosphere in our city.
Yeah. It seems like you've figured out your role in the council, where your expertise is, when you need to talk and when you don't need to talk. And I, I think that's just, that's more than half of what it takes to, to show leadership and get some direction.
Yeah. And I, you know, and I think sometimes it's, you know, you just don't want to sit there and say, oh, we're all voting yes. But, you know, sometimes it's, you know, you do want to put out there on the record information about a piece of legislation. Sometimes, like you said, you don't need to say anything at all. And, and so that's kind of like knowing, knowing your role, knowing, you know, you know, Jack's been a great mentor.
Jack Heath, your council president.
Just extraordinary individual, great human being. And for me personally, has been a great mentor, someone who, you know, when he leaves town, if he's on vacation or he's out sick, I, I can step in, even if it's in the middle of a meeting like has happened.
Right.
You know, he's been, he's been a great, a great teacher.
Right. So when the council president might be on vacation and the vice president steps up, the, the tone is completely different. They try to run the meeting their way. It's like, it's almost like a coup. But you kind of morph into Jack when Jack's not there.
And again, you know, here's a guy who has run $100 million companies and, you know, has run board meetings. And so you learn what he expects. Because you might have the meeting this week, but the boss is coming back next week. So, and you know, he's watching. So that's the, what, you know, and, you know, sometimes depending on the issue, we get a few people every now and then come to meetings and comment. Most of the time, we don't. And then the one night that he was out the other week, we had like 30 people get up, do public comments.
Right.
It was like a year's worth of public comments. And, and he was, that was when he had pneumonia. But I'm glad he's, I'm glad he's good. Glad he's back. But, you know, proud to be able to step in and form anytime I have to.
You kind of got in a little bit of trouble. You had some criticism of the county government that kind of got out there.
Yeah.
I thought your criticism was right on target. Do you want to talk about the city's relationship with the county?
Well, John Posoty is doing a great job as county executive. And I know I might've stepped into it this week a little bit. But I, I think, you know, I, I get along with, with pretty much everybody on the county council, most of them. And I can call and talk to them and stuff. And John, I think, has done a great job. John, you know, a municipal guy. He was a town manager of Fruitland. So he understands, you know, he understands municipal, municipal government, which is great to have someone in that role that understands that. So, yeah, you know, I mean, my, my thing this week was, you know, we did the, the alcohol board that we, that we got passed through.
Right.
The General Assembly was to basically expand the board and have some designated city seats. But we've not had any appointments on it. And I've, you know, I've expressed my frustration to the mayor on multiple occasions. And, and I just felt that at the time, you know, and a lot of times I don't, I don't do things out of school. You know, I let them know if I got something to say, they'll know ahead of time so they can expect it. So I, you know, I just, hey, when are these appointments going to go through?
Right.
Because they have to go to the governor and the governor has to make the appointment. And the board right now is not operating according to the law.
Two or three people, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, and it's supposed to be five.
It needs two residents of Salisbury.
Yeah.
Under the legislation.
This is a state law.
Right.
We went through great lengths to, to get it passed. And we passed unanimously in both the Senate and the House, and the governor signed it. So I'm like, you know, I think it's time, you know, it's, it's been a couple of years.
It's a couple of years, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I felt that it was time to at least speak about it and, and put it out there. So maybe that will, will push.
But now the rub, as I understand it, is, you know, the mayor might have some ideas. You all might have some ideas about who should be the city's representatives, but the county executive, acting county executive gets to make those picks.
Yeah. I mean, you know, and in this, I, you know, there's always a, a natural rub between the legislature and an executive. That's just natural. But the role is the mayor should make the appointment. If he wants us to confirm it and discuss it, happy to.
Right.
And, but that's not really a part of that right now where it's like required that we confirm. But a lot of times, he likes to have our consent and support too.
Right.
But it's clearly his role to make the appointment. And I know that they've put a couple of names forward in the past. And, and there was some, that ever happened. And I know that there's been some discussions with the current executive. So I'm hoping that, that they can in the next month or so get, get at least one appointed and maybe somebody else.
You've, you asked some hard questions about spending. So how are you feeling about the upcoming budget?
Well, I, I think with, this year with the extraordinary surplus that, that we had, shows that there, there is, especially the past couple of years on the budget, you can tell, like when we get it, like we see the mayor gets it and sends it back and tells them to cut the budget because we see those notes.
Right.
So we know that, you know, there's a lot of that that goes on even before it comes to us. And sometimes past couple of years, it's been hard to like, you know, you might see something that, that seems out of line. But, you know, anytime you ask a question, you know, they, they, they have, they have an answer or an explanation for it. So I'm, I'm with, you know, current round of assessments and then whatever they're going to come through, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to have a good budget, that we're going to be able to meet, I'm certain we're going to be able to meet the minimum expectations. And I'm hoping that we can, you know, take care of some things infrastructure-wise within the city that, that we need to. So I, I think there's been a good handle on, on everything. And Keith Corddry is, is incredible, our finance director for the city.
Another perfect audit.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, so that's, you know, five years in a row. And so they, and it's a pretty exhaustive process that they go through. So very proud of that team. And I think if you have that in place and then you have the transparency, because one of the things that we get, and I've talked to people from other governments, they don't get it, is every week they send us every check that's cut.
Right.
So we get to review and, and every now and then I might see something sending, hey, maybe look at this. I saw we did this. Just from my, my experience, this shouldn't cost as much.
Right.
You know, so, and then, you know, and a lot of times they'll look at it and, and expand what they're doing, or at least looking for a different cost, whether it's tire repair or flat repair or something like that. I mean, it sounds minor, but you know, flat repair shouldn't cost a hundred dollars.
Right. It all adds up.
You know, unless it's a big truck or something. So, you know, so sometimes, you know, and they know, and then, you know, it also just lets them know that we're watching. So, but we do appreciate that, that transparency. And I think that's kind of something that, you know, it doesn't always make the public because we do it internally.
Those are any other issues that we as citizens should be watching you guys on?
If you run it, I'll run it. But the Salisbury Marathon that's coming up.
Right. Okay, yes.
So, oh, you're going to run it?
Yeah. I'm not going to run it. No, I will, I will run alongside some people and take some pictures.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Todd Dudek. No, the Salisbury Marathon, you know, they, they had it last year, safe, no, no incidents. They, so they're, they're, they're following all the COVID protocols for it. And they've already exceeded, this is going to be their highest registration.
It's the third year?
Third year. So they, they've got a record number of registrations for it. And Chris DeMone tells me it's the flattest, fastest marathon on the East Coast. So, and a lot of people that come and run it have run their personal best.
Right.
And, and these people are qualified for the Boston Marathon and I think the New York City Marathon. So, yeah. So it's a great, going to be a great event. And then the Folk Festival coming up this year.
Right. We get it again. Awesome.
For the fourth time.
Yeah.
Well, fifth, if you count the, the virtual one.
Right.
So, you know, again, another great event that shows the, the heart and the core of our community, which is service and the thousands of people that, that serve there every year to make it happen. So really looking forward to having that again.
Muir, how can people get ahold of you if they want to talk to you?
My cell phone number is 443-397-0247. And my email address is m b o d a at salisbury.md.
He's Muir Boda. He's the Vice President of the Salisbury City Council. We're thrilled he had time to be with us here today. Thanks so much for coming, Muir.
Thank you, Greg. Good to see you.
I'm Greg Bassett from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper, another edition of 101 right here on PAC 14. First Shore Federal is proud to support PAC 14 and 101. We'd encourage every business to support PAC 14 and pick a program and support it. And let's make a difference.